Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. It is Monday, December 9, 2024. We are gathered for our generally weekly work session, Community Planning, Infrastructure, and Resources. We have various agenda items. By way of introduction, my name is John Kofalas. I'm one of the commissioners. That's why I'm on this side over the table. Joined by my colleagues, Kristin Stevens and Jody Shadak McNally. We are joined by our county manager, Lorraine DeVulker. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Leslie, who can get us started.
All right. Hello, commissioners. Good afternoon. We have just a couple of items on the agenda today, and the bulk of our time we'll spend on the Ranch master plan. So I'll turn it over here momentarily to Connor, and he can introduce his team from the ranch. I think we have a really good presentation. Some of this information you've heard before, some of it might be a little bit newer, at least for members of the public. So we've got information that is shared to you in hard copy. It's also attached to the agenda in MuniCode or online if anybody's looking for these slides and information. And then we'll just spend probably 10 minutes or so on item two. It's not a very long item, so the bulk of the time we anticipate toward this item. So I'll turn it over to Connor, just so we don't waste any more time, and we'll kick it off.
Thank you, Leslie. Good afternoon, commissioners. Connor McGrath, Director of the Ranch. I'm going to introduce my colleagues so that we can keep things moving. At the table with me, we have Chris Bertinski, Operations Manager for the ranch, and Luis Romero, Events Manager for the ranch. And then also in the room, not at the table, we have Lieutenant Brad Harkin with Special Operations and dedicated to the ranch, and Abby Marr, Director of Marketing for the Ranch and Blue Arena with OVG. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to visit with you today and the members of the public to provide an update on the master plan. We do have almost 60 slides, so I'm going to try and move with purpose. And if you have questions, please stop and let me know. But if there's an area where you'd like me to drill deeper, I'm not intending to skip over, but again, just move so that we have time for you at the end to ask questions. And with that, we will start. So back in quarter two of 2024, the ranch visited with the commission and discussed further direction regarding the master plan. At that point, we dedicated to move forward and continue to engage our stakeholders, explore what the, at the time, First National Bank Building was going to turn into, which has now been renamed to the Peterson Toyota Center, continue with Phase 2A design plans. That was the new outdoor event space, not to be confused with 2B, which was intended to be the new arena and youth hockey center, and to continue the investigation into the funding methods to see how we could bring about the new hockey arena and youth center. From that point, we are here today to update you all as a board and members of the public on what have we found since then? And what are we recommending and providing to you and options for you to provide additional feedback and support in the direction of the next phases of the master plan? We also want to hear feedback from members of the public as we go throughout the process, as we have done with the different stakeholder groups. So some notable points for anyone that's listening or watching that doesn't have the full breadth of history of the ranch. In the late 1990s, members of the 4H community and general community had funded a one-year, supported a one-year sales tax to purchase the 244 acres that the ranch currently resides on. Another 20-year sales tax was passed by the voters for a 0.15% in 2003 to build out Phase 1 of the master plan at that time. In 2019, the measures to extend that sales and use tax were passed, and the funds started accumulating in 2019 through efforts in 2017 and 18. And in 2024, we completed Phase 1 of the new sales and use ballot measure, campus development that includes the new site infrastructure, the new 4H youth and community arena, RV, two facility additions, and various new roadways. Since the Phase 1 has been completed, we have seen over 500 users of the RV parking lot. Since you all helped us open the new 4H youth and community arena in April, we have hosted 103 events with over 1,800 users of the facility, and equally 64 events with the new ranch warm-up arena in the Mac Equipment Facility with 2,100-plus users of that facility. And before getting into the details, I wanted to recap the goals of the master plan. As you can see on your screen, I'm not going to go through each one of them, but ultimately, holding ourselves accountable to engage the community, understand what the community's needs are, and then fulfill that promise by using the sales and use tax to deliver on the community needs that we are learning through their engagement. Discussing stakeholder engagement, you may have heard of a company called CSL or Convention, Sports, and Leisure. They've visited with you a couple of times as a board to provide updates. We refreshed their feasibility report in 2020. We also engaged the community in a targeted stakeholder engagement in January of '24. And then more notably, we engaged a third-party Corona Insights for community polling in 2023, and we'll focus a little bit more on those outcomes in a moment. And then ongoing relationship building and engagement continues for the stakeholder group for the teaching kitchen and the tenant being the Colorado Eagles at the ranch. Before the Corona Insight findings, we had 3,500 households surveyed or received the survey with a 7% engagement rate. Responses came from all cities within Lurmer County, plus Longmont, Millicott, and Windsor, and 78% of those indicated that they had an awareness of the ranch, with 28% noting that they had attended at least one event in the prior year. I just want to make a point on that. The prior year would have been '22, still for some still transitioning from regular world to COVID world, and they may not have been comfortable attending events. So we're going to re-poll that number the further and further we get into living with COVID. And then the responses, 40% of them indicated a strong support for road and parking improvements, and 29 respective to building construction. And then I think one of the biggest takeaways we had from this was the 78% and 77% indicating an interest in live music and outdoor concerts and festivals. So we're really taking notice of that, since it's been a part of the master plan for some time to have that outdoor event space, and then 69% food festivals and 51% live sports. So following the presentation in Q2 of this year, we have completed what our concept could look like for Phase 2, which would be building out the campus infrastructure to support vertical infrastructure that would later come. So getting the utilities in the ground, getting our roadways or parking lots, so that we can then come back in Phase 3 and build out the teaching kitchens, the concessions, if those are projects that you would support. So anticipated upgrades, you can see on your screen with an anticipated, the completion date of Q3 2027. And there are some renderings in here that you'll be able to conceptualize a little bit later. There are also some in your handout packet, the shorter of the handout packets on page So project options being presented today would include the Great Lawn Expansion, an elevated premium lounge at Blue Arena, Wayfinding Monument Signs and Event Plaza, a new convention center and conference hotel, and arena and youth hockey. Reflecting back on a comment Leslie made earlier, most of this, the public and you've all seen or received information on before, we're just getting to the point where we're fine-tuning and ready to execute on some of the areas that we just want your final approval and understanding of what's happening at a county facility. So the Great Lawn Expansion, if this is an option that the board likes, we are looking to have this be completed in three phases. Phase 1, they would all be completed approximately by July. That's realistically dictated by the county fair and having time to run the county fair. But Phase 1, we would look to construct new parking lots and sidewalks, connect showring road to Arena Circle, so that would be essentially the road that could become a frontage road to County Road 5 that would run on the furthest east part of the property, and then relocating water retention from the south of the campus to the north, giving us additional buildable land, and widening County Road 5. We'll be doing that this spring. It's a requirement of part of the PUD that we have with the City of Loveland, and that is between the old primary entrance on the north and the south end of the campus. Phase 2 is proposed, we would erect new fence lines to give that flow. If anyone's been on the property recently with the new fence lines and the gates, it's a much, we're able to control the property much easier, which then in turn gives people the opportunity to wayfind much easier by not getting lost. You know, getting a horse trailer lost in the Eagles traffic is never our goal. Installing new LED boards for public service announcements and sponsorship opportunities. You'll see throughout our phasing approach and suggestions to you that we're recommending going away from fixed signage and going more towards digital, that we can have two or three rotations instead of just one fixed asset, both for sponsorship as well as wayfinding. Overall, at the county, we're looking at an improved technology backbone to support the enhanced needs and demands of guests on the campus, leveling the interior bowl to gain an additional 14 acres of event space, relocating existing utilities, and improving the rentable space to meet the current market demands. The rendering that you see on your right-hand side, commissioners, the total grade change from the far south to the north part of the property does not exceed 4% at any point. So it would be much more usable, in total about 20 acres in the concept stage, that we would be able to rent for perspective. The carnival is positioned in the more northern parcels. In the center parcels, we have the watering hole, which you're all familiar with at the county fair. So if you're trying to gauge perspective on sizing, you can see the Ferris wheel and some of the other tent sizes. And then Phase 3, you can see the, again, where those tents are in the middle sections, the attractions are the carnival set up in the more northern, and then on the very far north, there's the pizza pie replica of what's closer to Blue Arena and the Peterson Toyota Center. That is a proposed area to build a new outdoor amphitheater with the option to have about 4,000 general admission tickets, so standing VIP pit area. We have not narrowed in the capacity of that part of the facility yet, and 2,500 approximate fixed seats within a traditional amphitheater setting. We would also look at that point to build those other vertical infrastructures to support the teaching kitchen, concessions, and then fixed flushable outdoor restrooms that are in the bowl area. Completion for all phases by July of '27, with a budget coming in around $35 million. Return and investment from the economic studies that we ran was about 15 years. The numbers were 12 to 14. We feel much more comfortable with 15, and that would provide us, again, with that additional acreage in the bowl area. The rendering you see to your right of this Excel is Parking Lot E, which is the closest parking lot to the 4H Youth and Community Arena. And we are proposing that we would expand that parking lot to almost 1,000 spaces and include an acceleration lane dedicated to that parking lot to get individuals back onto Arena Circle and keep that traffic flowing towards the north of the property and Delusion Road more efficiently. The next project on your screen and in your handout is a premium lounge at Blue Arena. There's a rendering on your screen, and while you would digest that and the public digest that, I can speak a little bit to what's on the next slide also, just the rationale. When the Blue Arena was built, or Budweiser Event Center was built, there was less of an emphasis back in those plans and in the market in general on premium spaces. It was getting people into seats, if there was a suite that could be rented or leased. And today, we could do a lot better, and you'll see that later with some of our premium spaces. We position some of what really should be back of house at the premium level for our staff to use, such as the kitchens and just general back-of-house equipment. The building didn't maximize premium spaces, and we're trying to come back around to that when we're looking at selling the suites, which you all know after the renovation look wonderful, the new seats, both in the premium space and the regular bowl seating. We do sometimes get asked, and frequently enough, what am I getting for my season ticket holder? What am I getting for my premium seat? So we're hearing people, and we're trying to provide an indoor-outdoor experience. We see a large demand for that in Colorado. And here, you can see on the west side of the property, we would, the rendering and concept is to add a year-round bar on the concourse level. And then on the grade level, having an area where we could bring in food trucks, or we could bring in chef activity stations, or different products that are not being sold inside the building to elevate that premium experience. And that concept is already happening on the premium suite level to some extent. And we would like to offer it in an area that does provide that more indoor-outdoor experience, and where we can provide that elevated experience to individuals, not just for sporting events, but also concerts. Additionally, having the asset and the new bar area, it does provide additional opportunities for sponsorship, and it also provides us with a standalone asset that we could rent out for parties, be it christenings, birthdays, whatever it may be, where it does not have to interact with the main building. We have a very conceptual budget, but I am on the high end in what I'm presenting of $2 million, with additional event space of 15,000 square feet. Return investment between sales, as well as sponsorship partnership, being five years, and we would look to complete this by Q1 of 2026. Wayfinding Monument Signs and Event Plaza. You've all seen the wayfinding package, just displaying that for the purpose of the public watching. You can see we have various different wayfinding options. Like I mentioned at the beginning, our goal will be to double down on making as much digital as possible. And our goals overwhelmingly are providing greater exposure on I-25. The monument sign that we have today is approaching 23 years old. Half of it works, half of it doesn't. It doesn't really represent the quality that we want to have and the exposure we want to have for our we want to have for our events. So we've worked with the City of Loveland and Chris Brzezinski has, has managed the majority of this project to get a 10 foot by 20 foot dual sided electronic board. As you can see, you can't see, in the center of, of this schematic. And you can also see we have the markers that are two over from the, the left, the left hand side. Those would picture frame I-25 with downlit, multi-changing colored lights so that we could also represent if there's an activation on the property, whether it's for a St. Patrick's Day event or a breast cancer awareness event, we can show our support through that, that presence on I-25. I know night sky is a concern for, for some of you and we have worked with the team to make sure that these are downlit and that they're not protruding and they're, they're not also distracting people from, from the interstate. The last concept, you may not have, we may not have talked to the board in about a year on this, this topic. But when we built the new Arena Circle, one of the major goals was to separate the foot traffic from vehicle traffic. And we achieved that very well with the construction of the new Arena Circle and Andalusian. What we haven't fully dialed in is the ADA parking lot, the parking lot that resides closest to Blue and the Peterson Toyota Center. We still see foot traffic and vehicular traffic intermingling in that area. So this proposed plan would relocate the ADA parking to the, if you follow the concrete sidewalk in front of Blue Arena, and then it, it punches into the parking lot. Either side of that, that concrete sidewalk is where we're proposing to move the ADA parking. And then turning the, the area on your image to the left, the red highlight area, we would look to turn that into a new event plaza. The image on the right is a stock image just for, for conceptualizing what could be possible. But we would be very mindful of how we, how we turn that space into something that could also be activated. Today, we activate the west lawn for certain events. Maybe we could move it into the event plaza equally for, for the fair. It could be activated for other events on the campus. Today, it's not a space we can activate outside of just the ADA parking. And if we're successful at relocating that, we would not extend any distance between the furthest current ADA spot and the furthest distance of the new spot would be no more than 25 feet, 25 additional feet. Keeping in mind, this budget seems high because we just, we just talked about the event plaza. The majority of this budget is in the wayfinding. There, I believe it's five and a half million dollars is in wayfinding and then the rest is in the plaza and the monument sign, which we also did get some private support for that. And so we would look for completion of that also by '26, budget of $7 million and 130,000 square foot of additional outdoor event space. The next area is the new convention center and conference hotel with a big old asterisk that the, the conference hotel may and almost likely would be a separate project. But there's great synergies between the two that I, I would like to keep them, I'd like to keep them together for the, the purpose of talking conceptuals. So the Peterson Toyota Center, formerly the First National Bank Expo Halls, we have more event days in that building than we have in any other building or asset on the property. So grounds, blue, the MAC Equipment, McKee, the new 4H Youth and Community, which is astonishing that, that, the people, the quantity of people that come through that, that building is, is incredible. With Lurmer County's population growing 18% over the last decade, we've really seen that increase of business coming, coming to us looking to have those larger events. We have kept the board abreast of that for, for the last, at least the last two years where we're turning events down or event organizers are, are they shoehorning their event that typically is at an 80,000 square foot facility, they're putting it into our 36, 37,000 square foot facility because they want to be in the, in the, in the region. So we have, we continuously experienced that. We were getting RFPs submitted to us on a frequent basis for us to respond to host their event. And I believe the number is 90, 95 groups we have turned away this, this year so far just for that facility. We did look at, we did look at renovating the Peterson Toyota Center to become a 150 to, sorry, 115 to 130,000 flat floor expo facility. That budget was coming in close to $40 million with the majority of, the majority of the, the, I should say, the two majority items. One was relocating concessions and to do relocate the concessions, we also have to relocate all of the gas mains and the electric main and the Lurmer County IT primary closet for all backbone infrastructure would have to be relocated to. So there's a lot of money in just relocating utilities. The roof between the two existing facilities is flat. There's issues with that. So it just starts to all add up pretty quickly to renovate an existing building. And we have received a budget back close to $40 million. Again, I'm a little high on, on this budget presentation to build a new 120,000 square foot expo hall on the property at a different location. And we'll talk about suggestions for Peterson Toyota Center later. The, there is another packet. We can also make this available or we'll, we'll have it available for the public regarding economic impact. This is a, a general overview of what's in your larger packet that we all understand many of these event centers and convention spaces, they're not intended to, to be self-sustaining. They're, they're funded by the general fund or they're funded by another organization because ultimately they have direct and indirect economic value. We're in a little bit of a unique scenario where we're not getting general fund support for the most part. For the fair, we get a little bit. But we also have a directive to become self-sustaining. So we have provided an extensive overview of direct and indirect economic impact benefits to you, but this is a general summary as they relate to the new proposed convention center hotel. And you've heard me say this at the start, a convention center, the hotel is going to be key for this. If we, if we build spaces, whether it's the new, a new arena, a renovated arena, larger outdoor space, the new convention center, and we don't allow people to truly take their jacket off and experience the ranch and be there and walk from activity to activity where they have to get back in their car, drive to local restaurants and leave the property. I, I'm not going to say it wouldn't be successful, but it wouldn't be as successful if, as if we had a hotel partner that would be able to come alongside us, operate that facility. And we discussed a number of weeks ago, the, the, some of the nuances that I certainly did iron out for all of, all of us on how we could achieve that. Substantial completion in this scenario is for the convention center. So 20, Q2 of '27. Again, we would be able to continue to run the Peterson Toyota Center all the way up until we transition. And then we would transition over to a new convention center if you supported that. And with the, on the convention center, we have a return in investment of approximately 14 years through running the economic impact. If you received additional slides in your printed packet, I apologize. So the new arena and youth hockey, we, as you all are aware, we, we took one approach to issue a P3 back in 2023. We awarded that P3 pending negotiations in Q1 of '24. And we just, we couldn't come to an agreement on, on some of the mechanisms within that, within that RFP. At this point, that's behind us. We, we have learnings from that and we're taking an approach, a second approach. And with that is one example on your right hand side, the rendering is a concept of repurposing the youth hockey facility, sorry, the Peterson Toyota Center to become the youth hockey facility. That facility would host locker rooms, weight rooms, changing rooms, pro, or skate rental. It could have a pro store, we would have space for that by using a lot of the existing office areas as those smaller spaces and then adding on to the, what is the existing north hall for the third youth hockey sheet of ice. How we get here, and I, I know I've spoken publicly about this, is that Blue Arena is 21 years old. That, that facility, for anyone that has been in it anytime in the last 21 years, it's electric and especially when the Eagles are in there, there's a great energy, there's a great synergy between the home team, the away team for concerts. It's a great venue. I really want to make sure we're, we're turning over every stone before we jump forward and look at spending 300 plus million dollars on a new facility when we have an existing facility that's also close to the Peterson Toyota Center, which we're also stating now no longer meets the need. So we've got two buildings that we're saying, don't meet the need, they're close enough together. Could we attach them, renovate them and try to meet the needs of the community today, but not be caught flat footed in another 20 years? To that effect, we would, we're proposing with the renovations that we would include additional ticketed premium spaces, so clubs, which when we presented back to you after we had visited some events or some conference centers in California and Nebraska in 2023, that was a big focus of, of those new buildings, not necessarily being fixed of a seat, but being able to be in the, in the arena, experiencing a premium experience, but being able to also move around similar to an amphitheater concept. Additional back of house and amenities, expanded front of house amenities, the concourse restrooms, concessions, and then fixed seats and eight new premium seats. So ultimately taking the northern end of the property or the building and completing that bowl to become a 360 degree bowl and completing the suite level to become a 360 degree suite level with eight, eight additional suites above that premium space. And then below, I mentioned already, but we would have the three sheets of ice locker rooms, changing facilities, cafe, weight room, workout indoor and outdoor spaces within the existing Peterson Toyota footprint. This is another larger rendering of what could be possible. You can see in the purple on the plan north, we have fixed seating and then in gray between each of the sheets, we would have fixed seating. And we would have the capability with that new additional space on the front for that to be one or two story addition. These next slides are renderings. On the concourse level, you can see in purple, we have the expanded concourse and marshalling areas. In that kind of topi color, we can see the premium seats. On the event level, we would also have, AKA basement, we would have a new hockey room, new stairways, just practically based on, on the addition, we would have to relocate the stairs, new dressing room and a new event level club entry. So I want to note that if we were to get support and move forward with further exploring this option, that would, that would change our plans for the new premium lounge at Blue Arena. And they would, they would essentially amalgamate into one plan where we would have the goal of adding a premium lounge when we're doing this additional work. Then on the premium level, you can see we have the new concourse, both on the main concourse as well as the new 360 that goes above the premium seats to plan north. All in all, we'd be looking at a completion date of Q2 of '28 with a budget of approximately 120 million on the high end with added event space within Blue Arena of 65,000 square feet, added fixed seats of 300 and additional premium spaces, so clubs, et cetera, of approximately 2,000 additional sellable tickets. Next slide regarding an overarching goal that I have received and we have accepted loud and clear from the board and from county leadership, and we mentioned a little bit earlier, is the concept of self sustainability and really making sure that we, we are not continuing a 0.15% sales and use tax if, if the seated board at that point chooses for us not to and we're moving in the assumption that that will be the case. So we, we, we have that directive for 2039. Since 2022, and I'm sure previous to my experience here, there have been mechanisms implemented to generate additional revenue and assets. You've all seen those firsthand from some of the new sponsorships, the new partnerships, naming rights. And in the summer of '23, the board supported the schedule for implementing a paid parking model for ticketed events at Blue Arena. The ranch would like to and plans to return to the board in quarter one of next year, 2025, to present information and a model regarding expanding paid parking for all events on campus. And then to afford us the opportunity and some additional elbow room, 244 acres gets pretty consumed when you're running the number of events through the ranch as we do. And we, we have experienced an opportunity to close on the land contiguous to the north of, of the ranch on Andalusian. And that is approximately 70 acres across three parcels that Lurmer County and the ranch would look to close on, on, in December of 2024 so that we can pivot and grow the, grow the ranch responsibly, going back to one of our master plan goals and also meet those community needs. In front of you is a timeframe, timeline of information presented earlier, but summarized in one place, land acquisition in '24 with some phasing in 20, phase one in '25, phase two is in '26, and then all the way through phase, the completion of the new or renovated arena and youth hockey facility. Also the budget combined in one space. I find this is helpful for us visual people. And then proposed next steps. We are proposing to the board that we would continue to explore the possibility of renovating Blue Arena and the Peterson Toyota Center to serve the community as the new larger capacity and state of the art arena and youth hockey center. As well as finalize the design of the Great Lawn, civil and vertical infrastructure and return to the board with final options. Refine the master plan and bring a revised version to the board for adoption, which I know Leslie is going to discuss after, after my presentation. Engage the design and planning consultants to conceptualize a new convention center and conference hotel. And then return, the ranch returning to the board in Q1 '25 with data to support a campus wide paid parking model. And as always, continue to engage stakeholders in developments of the future of the master And lastly, thank you for sticking with us. We ultimately are asking the board for, we'd love to hear your feedback. We'd love to provide you additional information, answer any questions that you have and get a general sense if the board supports the ranch moving forward with the proposed next steps on the previous slide.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Connor. That's a bit of information that you shared, which we, we have seen in one version or another previously. So thank you for that and thanks to your team. Colleagues, do you have any questions, comments, observations? Yes, Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Connor and team for a great presentation and all the information that we received. Couple of questions I have just kind of popped in my head that I hadn't had before. What do these changes do to help with our fair and rodeo? What does that look like? What does that look like for improving our fair and rodeo as well?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I'll take a, I'll take a shot at that and then of course I'll hand it off if there's any information that I missed to our fair manager. To me, Commissioner, it's endless from the additional parking and parking lot E, well, even backing up, think about where we were in the fair of '22 when we're still using the old service road to the night and day difference of the fair of '23 where ingress and egress was changed significantly. And I think about that from the outskirts of the campus in coming into the additional parking in parking lot E, the event plaza, if we have an additional space in Blue Arena and it's renovated, ultimately that increases the rodeo capacity. And then in the main grounds, from an accessibility standpoint, we've been really diligent to make sure that we're not just physically accessible, but you all have been experiencing the sensory days, but physical is important also. So making sure that when we're building out the campus, our, some of our consultants have brought to us, even in the very conceptual stages, make sure we've got no area where you can, or longer than 20 feet before you've got a bench for someone to sit down. With that, with that change in the elevation within the Great Lawn, it's going to give the event team greater opportunities to engage more booths and food trucks to come in and use the spaces. Today, we have a lot of areas on the campus that they're not, they're not convenient to use because of a lack of water or power or the slope just doesn't work for putting a food truck that's going to be frying food. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, it does. And if I might, Mr. Chair, my other, only just clarifying question on, just for now, not saying I'm out of questions, but when you say paid parking for all events, do you, are we talking about all events, including?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. No, we're not. We'll, we'll provide more information for that in the upcoming presentation as well as options.
Cool. I look forward to that presentation then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thanks for those questions. Commissioner Stevens, questions, comments?
Yeah, so I really like the direction we're heading here. I think that the premium seating piece is really crucial to kind of attracting what, what people expect now from, you know, when they go to an event. And Leslie and I passed through a premium seating area at the Moby Gym at a basketball game the other day and we were like, this is, this is what we're talking about. So that was kind of a fun moment, but I do think that people want that, that kind of experience, right? And I think even with developing the plaza area, like when you leave an event, you're kind of keyed up, right? You're excited, you just heard music, you maybe just, you know, you just went to a winning, you know, hockey game. And, and you know, when you're in a city environment, you often kind of spill out into the streets and there's, there's music playing and there's, you know, food trucks and stands and, and you know, you, you kind of keep creating that magic that you've had maybe experienced that evening. And I think I can envision that with sort of the event space of being, you know, like why should we, okay, now I gotta get in my car and go home, you know what I mean? Like let's keep the party going. I mean, and that enables that kind of experience that people really like. So I really, I really appreciate those, those aspects. The one question I had was, was, and this is, this is maybe my lack of vision, but in adding more seats like around, like specialty seating sort of 360, like where do you put a stage and what does that look like? Like, like say it's a concert. So I get it for hockey, but like how does that work for like a concert? Some people might not see the front of the stage. I don't, I don't know how that works exactly.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. We would likely still have an end stage that largely is Live Nation and, and also OVG's bread and butter is having an end stage. We have fewer concerts that have a full, a full bowl seating because we can add so many seats to the floor, then it really would play tribute to us for hockey or for sports to have those additional fixed seats. The premium space, just looking back at the rendering earlier, if you envision where the restaurant is on the, on the suite level, what we're proposing for one of these options is that we physically elevate the floor, the floor plates so that you're above the concourse level. We would remove the kitchen and reposition the kitchen into the basement. So we would have from the west side of the building to the east side of the building would be an indoor-outdoor premium lounge with hanger doors. So you're again getting that, that premium experience from the lounge downstairs, carrying that through to the elevated experience upstairs.
Thank you. Thanks for explaining that. So it would still be that concerts would, there would be some seating at the end that wouldn't be usable?
Yeah, or the, if it was a 360 stage or a round stage, we see that more frequently for comedy in Blue Arena, that would, that would definitely add additional seats.
Yeah, like Nate Bargatze, that was a, okay. No, I just, I guess I'm, I'm really excited about it because I think about, I think that there's a lot of great possibilities here too. And I think about the dining experience too of like having, I mean, there is a restaurant, but it's not really that people know about it and that it's not really used that much, I think. And so having that sort of a part of like, oh, like so, so many people are like, if you're not in a suite and you don't want to eat necessarily some, you know, bratwurst or something like that, you're like, oh, I'm going to go somewhere else to eat before I get here and then you have to time that out. So I think having, having better facilities on, on campus that would really accommodate people and there again, wanting to get the party started early, like clearly I'm in a party mood, but it's almost the holidays. But I do, I like this concept. I'm really intrigued by it. I'm supportive and I think this will be really great for our community. Thank you.
I just want to help and add on to the answer. We have also looked at the amphitheater as taking those larger events so concerts can now fit outside, so we can accommodate quite large numbers, maybe 15, 20, 40,000 people out in that amphitheater area so we can bring in much larger concerts and much bigger festivals. So it's a day experience, not just a couple of hours experience too.
Thank you, colleagues. I don't have too many questions, just a couple of easy ones, I think, because we've discussed this and by way of comments, I would offer that issues related to sustainability, both financial, fiscal and even environmental sustainability in terms of landscaping, in terms of different ways of getting to the ranch complex, you know, in terms of transportation modalities, I think we've talked about that. You've shared, Connor and your team, that that's certainly a high priority, so I appreciate that. I'm understanding that regarding the Great Lawn expansion, I guess we won't be able to roll down the hill anymore, but you're proposing you're going to fill that bowl with a lot of dirt, I suppose. That's an interesting, I'd like to see that, but that'll be more or less, I think you said a 4% gradient perhaps, so I think that will be very helpful. And then, and then I, regarding your questions, I do support the next steps, I do support this direction. I think you're hearing that from us, we'll certainly hear from Commissioner Shattuck McNally. But I'm wondering, is there a rendering or an image that shows the proposed ice hockey arena, how it connects with the Blue Arena, is that a physical connection? And then if everything works out, we have the convention, convention center and the hotel, how does that all look together? Do we have a picture of that?
Thank you, Commissioner. We do not. We follow in your direction today. We would seek the consultants to help us bring those together. The pricing that we're presenting to you is based on general square footage of fully enclosed spaces. So if we took a different approach and had a, there was a rendering back in 2017, I believe, where it was a large archway reaching from then the First National to the Budweiser Event Center and it just had a gateway below it. And this, the pricing that we're presenting to you today again is for fully enclosed space that could also be utilized as retail, restrooms, concessions, so that that could be open independent of either of the buildings being opened.
Thank you. And certainly the idea of a plaza, I think we've also talked about the importance of accessibility on different levels, you know, people who might have mobility challenges and all of that, that's, that's really important and certainly we always want to do a shout out to Sensory Days, that's one of our favorite events. So thank you for answering my questions and receiving my comments and from my perspective, I think we move forward. Oh, Lurinda, anything you'd like to share really quick? Please.
I thank you for the thoughtful approach. I think the stakeholder engagement going into this and then following this is going to be really important, which we've talked about, we know. The idea of adding 300 fixed seats and 2,000 sellable tickets is pretty amazing. I think that makes a big difference inside that arena and modernizing it to what people expect to see. So I'm anxious to see the full campus rendering now that you've got the feedback. What would this look like and how do we keep the party going and make the dream happen, right?
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Good work, well done. I believe we can move on to the next item on the agenda regarding the master plan adoption process.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. And appreciate that we have Lieutenant Harkin here, which implies or more than implies that we're taking into consideration working with the sheriff's office and looking at making sure that it's all integrated regarding public safety and those kinds of things. I'd like to go there.
Commissioners, while we work with the technical equipment here, trying to get this, there we go. Thank you, Rebecca. So you have also a hard copy before you and up on the screen here. We've realized over the years that how we've assigned responsibility for adopting our various plans is a little bit inconsistent and since we have several coming up, including the Ranch master plan that you just heard about, but also actually this afternoon, the water master plan and then in early next year, you'll have the transportation master plan. We thought it would be helpful to just go through the list of all the plans we do as an organization and make sure we have clarity on adoption responsibility. The Colorado revised statutes actually assigns the responsibility to our planning commission for master plans. It's the duty of the county planning commission to make and adopt a master plan for the physical development of the unincorporated territory of the county and subject to their approval. And there's, there's specific language in the statutes about our comprehensive plan in essence and master plans that apply countywide. And so you can see at the top of the list here, our county, our comprehensive plan that was most recently adopted in 2019, that's something that the county planning commission clearly has responsibility for. Any plan that is an element of that plan, like our area plans fall under that kind of banner as well as our Estes Valley Plan, something like the water master plan where it's actually a new requirement by the state that counties and cities start to develop water master plans as an element of their comprehensive plan, that also falls within that type of responsibility. We also have, if you move on down the list through natural, oh, thank you, I'll let you drive while I, see if I can, if we move down the list, we have plans such as our open lands plan that are countywide also and our planning commission has historically adopted those plans, but they don't adopt specific plans that are, we district plans or stewardship master plans and certain of those, the county commissioners have adopted or the departments have adopted, as you can see on the list here. Similarly, for engineering, we have very specific technical plans that Planning Commission or that other cities may adopt access control plans, but it is the responsibility of the planning commission to adopt the transportation master plan and then certain stormwater master plans with our, with our partners. That's about where we draw the line in terms of planning commission responsibility for these plans. Historically, we've had planning commission step in and adopt or provide feedback on certain plans like our solid waste infrastructure plan and the Ranch master plan in the last go-round. I think now that these plans are getting much more site-specific and much more infrastructure-oriented, we would recommend that these be adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, not the planning commission, because it's really more of an infrastructure budget type of plan and it's not countywide, it's not for, you know, the development of the unincorporated county and some of the specifics that are required by statute. And if you agree with that approach, certainly that also applies for many of the other plans that we do within the county organization that have always been adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. So we just wanted to share this with you and see if this approach makes sense to you as far as the adoption responsibility noted in the column here for all these types of plans. And this may not be a completely comprehensive list of everything we do, but I think it probably captures 80 to 90%, if not more than, than that of our plans in the county and especially with the ones that are coming up most immediately. We wanted to have clarity and make sure we were all on the same page about our adoption process.
Thank you, Leslie. Very quickly, can you explain, clarify, so the, so the planning commission has adopted these plans, for example, the water master plan, and yet we are hearing that this afternoon and I believe will be approving the plan. What's the distinction between adoption and approving?
So, that's a really good question, actually, but the formal required process of adoption is what's specified in the statute and that's what the planning commission is required to do by statute for certain plans. Approval or ratification is what we've always also done with these plans with the county commissioners, just to make sure that there is a role for the county commissioners and that you're on the same page with the planning commission in essence. And so this afternoon's plan is a great example of that. If you had a different idea or perspective on an aspect of the plan and you wanted to, say, send that back to the planning commission to say, would you consider adopting this element, that would be a way to ensure alignment between the two bodies. But the formal action is adoption, the less formal action, but to, in order to assure alignment is the approval or the ratification that the county commissioners have done. And we've done that almost all of these plans. There's also a county commissioner role in approving the plan and we try to, as we do the plans, ensure that there's alignment between the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners, which is why you're seeing it this afternoon. And you could have the option to suggest new changes. We would not hope that that be the case just to avoid, you know, kind of volleying it back and forth since you've had input prior to this afternoon, but that is an option. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you for clarifying. Colleagues, I'm sorry that I jumped in a bit, but Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm glad you clarified that because I, just for the public's benefit, I have some folks I know who would just kind of look at this list and that brought their attention. But so just, I know the answer to this, but just for those things that say PC or planning commission, it's not like the planning commission's off doing this by itself in a vacuum. This has got stakeholder involvement, Board of County Commissioners, we're having meetings and this is a collaborative process. So when we get to that adoption, we've all had, including the Board of County Commissioners, lots of feedback and voices and stakeholders. And so it's not like the planning commission has, has, you know, ultimate power or control or, just, just saying, it's just the state. So I just know I'm going to get that question, so I'm just going to deal with it now. So if you would, just want to make sure I'm correct on that.
Yes, that is a great clarification and actually the statutes require public engagement and involvement and that sort of thing. So if you want to get into that in more detail, but, and certainly that is an expectation very much in Lurmer County, that there be transparency and a lot of public engagement and stakeholder engagement. And, you know, certainly with the plans that I'm familiar with, there's a lot of planning upfront about how to engage and numbers of times that there are conversations between, you know, boards and commissions and the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners and so on to make sure that these plans get developed in a way that, that there's a lot of there's a lot of comfort at the end, once it's adopted, that there wouldn't be a, a gap between what you would say be wanting to see and what the public and the planning commission would want to see in that plan.
Commissioner Stevens, thoughts?
I'll just be brief, seeing the time. This looks good to me and I'm, I'm supportive of this going forward. I understand that the PC is, you know, has that statutorily, that responsibility, so I don't, you know, want to challenge that in any kind of way. But I do think that with the solid waste in the ranch, I like that it's, you know, with the BCC, because I do think that there's a lot, a lot going on there.
Yeah. Loretta, anything?
No, I think this makes good sense. Thank you.
Yes, it makes sense. Shall we go on to the next agenda item?
Yes. Thank you.
Ah, Ms. Everett.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. I'll be very brief and just let you know, you have two land use hearings this afternoon and evening, a 3 o'clock hearing and a 6:30 hearing. And there's several items on the 3 o'clock hearing, one a consent item and three discussion items, including the water master plan and consideration of a new zone district intended to protect existing mobile home communities from redevelopment. And then this evening, 6:30 hearing is for the Mustang Mountain Coaster in Estes Park. We do expect significant public interest in that item. I don't have an estimated number of people who may attend or comment, but we know that this is something that has garnered a lot of interest in the Estes Park community. There will be a time for dinner in between, depending, we've set dinner up so that it can be kind of a grab and go, depending on when the 3 o'clock hearing ends and the need to start the 6:30 hearing on time. That's it for me.
Thank you, Rebecca. Colleagues, any questions? Anything else, colleagues? Then we are adjourned at 2:30 PM, right on the money. Thank you all.